CSD 201 for August 12, 2025. A roll call.
Leah Canover.
Here.
Carlos Avia.
Here.
Jessica Redonia.
Here.
Adina Hoover.
Here.
Kevin Maron.
Here.
Lauren Zecuri.
Uh, okay. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First, a piece of information on the docket. We have received a board member resignation, which, as we all know, triggers a filling period of time, 60 days. We have a choice. We are still in a spot where we can utilize the previous election results, as we did for the previous board member. So, what would you guys like to do? Would you guys like to do what we did last time? Which is do the suspend policy and then appoint the next person in the election from the April election results? Or go to a posting process and post the position and go through the interviews in 60-day pieces? Does that...
I think so long as that person is willing, that it seems most fair to have the person who put in the effort to run.
Right.
Right. They presented themselves to the community. That's the reason we went to that list and those election results, because individuals presented themselves to the community and gave their credentials and did the work and went to the Board of Elections. So, yeah. We used those results that came from the community and went forward, as long as that individuals were willing. I think that process kind of vetted itself.
I couldn't agree more.
Great. Any need to go into closed session? Does anybody want to go into closed session to discuss it? Because this is technically a personnel.
No.
No. Okay. So, we are going to skip that closed session then. And the Chair will entertain a motion to temporarily suspend Board Policy 270's Procedures for Board Vacancies and to appoint Alexandria Mill to fill the Board's vacancy through the April 2027 election.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Maron.
Yes.
Ms. Canover.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. So, I would like to now bring up Alex to take the oath of office. And come out there.
She goes, "Where does she stand?"
Right in the middle. Okay. So, I'm going to move over here and I will say, and then you'll... After me. You ready? Okay. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Member of the Board of Education of Community Unit School District 201 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
Hi, Alexandria Mill. To solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Member of the Board of Education of Community Unit School District 201 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further swear or affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Community Unit School District 201.
I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Community Unit School District 201.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the children... affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's school or schools to advance the vision for Community Unit School District 201.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's school to advance the vision for Community Unit School District 201.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent of the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Welcome. Let's get a picture. Yeah, let's get a picture. How about a picture with the fam? Yeah. Heck, yeah.
I walked through the rain.
Don't even... I walked 30 minutes downtown. Ready?
You're looking better than me, sorry.
Two. Look over here, say cheese. Cheese.
That's a good one.
Who we get a picture with?
Board members, we're going to take a new pic.
Maybe the whole board? The whole board, or?
Whole board.
Okay.
I know. Let me see that picture.
We need a picture day.
Come on, Dad. I do what you do.
Let's get a picture of this board. Picture the board first. And you're going to Photoshop Lauren in?
Got to leave a space for her. She might have been on the side.
Ready? One, two.
Got to leave room for Lauren. We need a picture day.
I think I'm going to need one just of you and I may just add you.
That's okay.
So, if you guys can just...
See that guy?
You did. You did. You did. You did. You did. Good job.
Nope.
There's got to be an AI app.
Do my best. He has it good.
You are sitting next to Lauren. Yeah. Next to Lauren. So, actually...
Want to move this thing?
Oh, yeah. We can move that now. Sorry, we...
Move the box.
We're busy looking for tech support. It's clean up. Yeah.
Got to be a pain.
Carlos will try to make you...
You too. Good night. Bye, Edith. I'm going to try. I will. Do you like to do jokes?
I'm a social studies teacher, so yeah.
Randy, you going to tell?
Do you keep it with whatever you presented tonight? Yeah.
Do you want it?
Or we just keep a copy?
But we're meeting Friday at 9:00 with your person for about 15, 20 minutes? Great. Bye, Randy.
Good night.
Bye, Carla. Hey, I'll see you in the morning. I need help loading that PowerPoint for the new teachers. Thank you, ma'am. Adam, you got to stay, I guess.
You're stuck, Adam.
Hey, you're stuck.
Yep, you're in here.
Sorry.
Okay. Moving right along. The board will... The Chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss specific employees and probable or imminent litigation.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Maron.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Ms. Canover.
Yes. So moved. We'll be back.
Closed session. There is no public comment, so we're going to go right past on, we're going to go right past that. Approval of minutes, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 15th, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the July 15th, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Personnel recommendations, Nancy Van Ness, outplacement coordinator. Dr. Nady Norris, interim director of technology. Vanessa Corley, long-term sub, Westmont Junior High School dual. Hector Solis, long-term sub, Manning dual. Stephen Davis, teaching assistant. Rebecca Hamilton, teaching assistant. Sharon Vazalnylek. Take it. Head, general worker, food service Miller. Rebecca Hildebrand, general food service worker. Josh Ott, teaching assistant. Erin Slattery, teaching assistant. Lauren DeGrance, Manning principal secretary. Hadid Leon, parent liaison, resignations and retirements. Number two, approval of the August 2025 expenditure report. Number three, ratification of the July 2025 regular payroll. Number four, appointment of hearing officer. And number five, approval of student tour requests, Westmont High School athletics. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Maron.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Ms. Kenover.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, information and discussion. Let's talk about the handbook for 2025-2026.
Good evening, Board, Administration. My name's Adam Koroduski. I'm the assistant principal at Westmont High School. And last April or May, I came in front of you and asked for more time to work on our handbook, to modify it to an electronic format. We feel we have a 2025-2026 Illinois mandate compliant handbook to present to you. We worked real hard, we had a great team, and a lot of things came together. So we're excited about this new addition to, for information for our community, our families. Hopefully that we have better communication with it now. Couple of things about the handbook. We used the IPA Model Student Handbook, which was purchased from the Illinois Principals Association. Brian Schwartz, who's legal counsel to the IPA, made sure that it was legally compliant with the Illinois state mandates. So we'll use that as a guide in addition to our district and building needs as well. So we put it together, aligned it all. We have kind of two divisions, if you will. One would be a general district information that applies to all buildings across the district. It makes it very easy for families to, if they need some information, such as school contact info, you go to one page and you have every school over there. If you have a kindergartner and a fifth grader and a high schooler, you know all the information's right there. If you need the absence lines, one stop right there. So you get general information like that. The school hours are available if you forget when to pick up your kids because you have one in this building, that building. I've been there, I got three alarms on my phone, I'm going home. You gotta be like, where am I going? So visitor policies, things that are universal throughout the district, medical information. We had, you know, five different handbooks with different procedures, but they're all the same procedures, you know? So we made sure like things that were of district nature that apply to all students, all families were uniformly aligned. And we have sections like that for the community. Then you'll see that there's individual school building. All five buildings have a little bit of an area where they can share some things that are particular to their building. It might be locker use, or bus pickup drop-off procedures, lunch procedures, graduation requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So it was very nice to be able to So it was very nice to be able to put that. It has a table of contents, and they are all hyperlinked. So you don't have to scroll through the whole book. You can just click on the area and it'll take you right there. And we are going to post that on the websites as well for the community to use. Everywhere that there is a handbook, now will be the district compliant handbook. And then we'll also add it to the district webpage too, which lacks the handbook because they're all individualized. So now you'll have many locations to be able to find the handbook and hopefully get the information that you need.
I can't say thank you enough. This is like, I haven't said this in a little while, but this is like addition by subtraction at, in its best form, is subtracting out five separate handbooks that were PDFs that you had to scroll through and like couldn't possibly have matched and didn't match, and turning it into something that is much more user friendly, works better for the families, works better for the parents, and from an administration standpoint, having the bulk of the handbook being the same supports the administration and the district in a much better way. And, you know, really focusing on, okay, these are actually just the differences. Like, this is the definition of addition through subtraction. I love it. Love it, love it, love it. Are you going to post a video of it, of how to access it?
We do have a video. As soon as it's approved, we'll post. We didn't hire any actors, so it's going to be. Not too critical. I did want to thank the team that helped out. Shannon Cosar was a big help in organizing this. Thank you. Dr. Nadine Norris. Technology input. Lisa Grippo worked on other schools and introduced the samples that we were able to see. So that was really helpful. Edith Curtin added her expertise. Brian Dunn helped with the athletic code of conducts. Ron O'Connor helped with the finances parts. Thank you, Ron. Sabrina Reiman worked at the junior high very much for them. Jeremy Batista with the technology. And tomorrow he'll be working on posting this for us, along with Anna Vasileva and Edith as well. And I want to just give a special thanks to Sam Sinovich and Michael Lipinski, who really worked and picked up my technology slack and really helped us get going so we can get it to a modernized handbook. So thank you to all those people. And anyone I missed, I apologize, and we'll definitely get them later, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along, action items. Oh, we do have more discussion, don't we? I'm sorry. Tentative 2025-2026 budget. Ron? Need to highlight these. Check, ready to go. Check. I'm going to circle these.
Is it, oh, there it is. My apologies. So first of all, thank you for having me. Mr. Baldwin, Board of Education. This is a very preliminary budget from, for 201. Just so you know, there's a lot of it that is still kind of in process, but this is kind of what we're looking for, but we also have solutions. That's the big piece I want us to keep in mind as we look at things. It's all about evaluations and looking at what we can do to get better. So what I like to do, because when I was planning this, I was thinking to myself, this is probably the first major presentation I have to the Board. And I wanted to just kind of reiterate and remind people, yes, I've been in this role for twelve, in education, twenty plus years, teaching for four and then six in finance and operations. I've actually chaired at the state level, actually was the chair for IASBO, and I still do a lot with the federal level. I involve the community, have presented at the national level. I also have a leveling family that I always think about when I make these decisions, and I always consider myself an educator first. So with that being said, I'd like to go through this. First thing is a timeline. And although it was a little bit messed up there with the final budget adoption piece, this is a typical timeline for what I've been anticipating for the district. I'll have a better one next year, a little bit more detail for how much a budget takes to create. It's a year-round process. So mostly, whenever I'm trying to create a project, I'm also trying to implement a project. It's two times at once. In the meantime, I'm also getting audited on the prior year. So there's a lot to it. It's a lot of moving pieces, a lot of moving parts. And we at 201 have a lot of great resources with that business office. It's Shannon. I give you a lot of credit too, for assisting and helping out. So I wanted to give a recap. These are unaudited actuals compared to what was budgeted. So if you look at what the revenues were before, you could compare it. Education fund, there was a, there's a differential as well as ONM. Transportation had a decent one as well, but these were the revenues recapped. This is what was budgeted versus what actually happened. Now, the auditors are still in the process of all of this. This is from us pulling up the data, looking at it, and stating, okay, what is it that we're looking at? What is it that's going to be put in fiscal year '26 versus '25? There's a lot of sorting through that occurs with that, and that's why these are unaudited information. The ed fund has probably the biggest differential there with the revenues. It was a four and a half million dollar differential. The expenses, it's a little similar, same thing. Ed fund is about almost a $5 million differential from what was budgeted, as well as others. So it kind of just shows a recap of what the budget is. A budget is supposed to be a roadmap. Roadmap's not always right. Roadmap can change. But it's always nice to look at what's planned versus what happens, so then you can react going forward. And that's one thing that you're going to see a lot, with me especially.
And conservative, so.
Absolutely.
Coming in under what, are we budgeted for less than we actually received? Which is ideal, as opposed to the other way around, budgeting.
This time I want to be, well, what I'm trying to do at this point is try and grasp all of the pieces all at once within a small timeframe. So when I say that it takes a year to figure out a budget typically, yeah, it's a year. This was, this one was a tough one, just because I wasn't really in, I mean, I was in it, but I was, it's just digging and digging and digging, just to see what there are, what processes were in place, how things are going for the district. So here's some things I can tell you, because it, this is, this is, again, this is a state issue. This is a revenue issue. This is not just a Westmont one. Corporate personal property replacement taxes were pretty much based on 1978. The state of Illinois decided they were going to tax corporations based on the revenues they brought in, rather than just the property value. So as mentioned earlier in the finance facilities meeting, there was a lot of cash that was in influx from ESAR dollars, from COVID, to the respect that companies had to spend it, schools had to spend it. They were getting money, right? The PPP grants. Well, that money's now gone. That money was pushed into the system so that corporations were making major revenues, even though COVID was still in existence. Fast forward to now, money's gone, and the state has told us that whatever you probably received from last year, you're going to see a 41.3% drop, which is approximately $200,000 less for us. Manded categorical funding is another example. That's an estimated 8% decrease. Every year, it appears that the state tries, they kind of push it off, right? What they do is they take the funding and they prorate it. And they're trying to do this also to kind of make up for a balanced budget, because right now with evidence-based funding, they've been throwing in $350 million every single year additional. The money has to come from somewhere, and this is one of those examples. So mandated categorical funding, you're looking at all sorts of transportation. You're looking at different costs of like special education. And that has, that's been kind of a hit. I will have more information as to how much that's going to affect us definitively, but it's on everyone's radar. In the meantime, we have consumer price indexes. So what they do is, again, the state doesn't just, these are some of these rules that we're talking about. They're just kind of made. So there's no real rhyme or reason. So January 15th, a lot of us business managers like to look and watch and see when Consumer Price Index comes out. So that's just like the average of the increases of basic goods and services. It's actually CPIU that they typically use. It's 2.9% in December, so that's what they're saying. Well, that's probably what to expect when it comes to a levy you're asked later on. The other thing is the district, it's a tier four district. We have a lot of reliance on local taxes, which you'll see shortly. And then the ESAR funding is gone. So when school districts received that influx of cash, should have been spent because it is disappearing. One more piece to this that I didn't put on the slide, which is I want everyone to kind of think about for the future. You will remember that July 1st, there's approximately $6.8 billion in revenues, in grants that were supposed to be released to school districts across the country. They were withheld. Eventually, Republican senators, some of them put a letter together. They wrote to President Trump and they said, you can't do this. So they released it. Now, there's no telling what happens in the next couple of years, but that needs to be on the radar for everybody, because that still affects us, even though we rely so heavily on local values. So your revenue breakdown in this district is about 90% local. And then the state is 7.3% of our revenues, federal is only 2.8%. This is not the most normal piece. This is actually pretty high. So we do rely a lot on our locals. Of the local, about 70% of it is from homeowners. Which is, that's, that's typical. That's more of a typical balance. Whereas then you have commercial and industrial, that's more of that, okay, they supplement it.
Does that, can I ask, does that change much? I think we have questions sometimes as we were in our last endeavors, that piece, the commercial part is there. Is that something, and I know nothing's readily, something that can readily be changed, but is that something that significantly changed? I don't even know. What significance, but.
That's a great question. So when it comes to industrial and commercial areas, you can make it pretty penny by developing and bringing more in commercially. So if it is something of a development like that, that always helps, because now they're taking that piece of the pie.
Right.
So when I came, when I went to, like, when I was working at 59, when you saw the local revenue breakdown, it was actually like, like flipped. Residential's only 30%. Up in Leiden District, 212, it's very similar as well, because they have a lot of commercial and industrial. When it comes to a lot of homes, that's when you see a little bit of a difference. So that's something to think about.
It's not something.
We have some, we have commercial. We don't have as much commercial as, because again, we're, we're a two-square-mile district. We don't include all of Westmont. So we don't have the same. Essentially, our business area is up on Pasquinnelli, which is really.
But that, as people kind of throw out there, oh, have them pay more. Like, that's not a, is that a reasonable thing that's done?
It's, it all depends on the equalized assessed valuations that change over time. So as they increase, the tax rate actually decreases. And then it's inverse, so as the tax rate increases, that means your values are decreasing. And that's something that's not, like, that's not in our control. Bottom line is, it still relates to, you get the same dollar amount. It's just like, who's paying what percent?
Would this kind of relate to this breakdown essentially, right? Residential versus commercial? If we were to look at like, how much of our district is residential? And how much of it is commercial? Would this be, would it kind of correlate with that? Like, 75% of our spaces, or no?
I wouldn't say that, only because the commercial areas may be of higher value.
Yeah.
And it also doesn't take into account, remember that we do have a TIF area that has been frozen, so that isn't representative in here.
Yeah.
So that's worth thinking about as well. Personnel variables, just so everyone knows. Certified, it's kind of varying based on staff members, but it's typically an average of a four and a half percent. The Wespa contract called for a 4% increase. Custodial is a four and a half percent. And then your insurance, health, dental, vision as a whole, from the EBC, it's actually only 6%. I've heard 15 to 20% for some of our local districts. So we should be grateful, but at the same time, it's still 6% compared to the CPI, which is 2.9. So that's worth considering as well, thinking about. Other expense variables, so SaaS, it's transportation from Sunrise is a 4% increase. Westways is six. And then we budget pretty conservatively with services and supplies at 2.9%. The one thing that has extremely helped, helped extremely, was the taxi costs and the parent daily rate, only because it, it's nice convenience, it's nice comfort, and there's incentive for both sides. Other variables that we're really working on are the electrical and gas contracts, the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, and the sewer and water. So when you look at the expenses by the object, so when we, before we talk about this, salaries and benefits, you have about 76-77% of your expenses. Purchased services, which could be contracts, 7.7%. Supplies is at 3.6. Other, I can define that a little bit better. That's a lot more like tuition costs, seen a lot of that. Some special ed costs there. There's a variety that really stand out with, with, in regards to that. And then capital outlay, which we don't have too much of. But that's kind of what the district is when it, when it comes to spending.
So is this typical for, for school districts, this breakdown?
Yeah, yeah, I would say it's typical, for sure. Salaries and benefits are always going to be the primary driver of, of expenses, for sure.
We've always kind of talked about salaries and benefits being more in like the 80 to 85% range.
Okay. Yeah.
Which looks like. But this is typical.
Yes, definitely. So here's what we've come up with preliminarily with the operation funds. Now, you saw before what the last years, and we're looking at in terms of the $32 million in the ed fund. We do have the revenues for it. You also look at the expenses, though. It's also approaching 32.5 from our estimation. That's, that's a, that's a pretty, that's a, that's a difference, right? Operations and maintenance, we're looking at even kind of cutting it a little bit, just like how we've been in the past. Looking at a surplus there of $243,000. Transportation, we think we can break it even. We've done a really good job of kind of reevaluating routes early on. I've talked to Laurent, who's for Westway. So we're looking at it to be about even on that one. And then working cash, that's a $20,000 revenue, just because that's the interest cost. So if you look at the revenues and expenses, there is a deficit in the operating fund. To me, it's again, looking at a lot more of what has happened and what we do as a roadmap to make it so we can go further and make things right. It's not to say nothing was going horrible or anything, but it's just, it's one of those times where things are kind of changing when it comes to financials. When you're looking at revenues, there is a revenue problem, and expenses are still being expensive. It's, it's the reality of things.
So the, what the ask is, I mean, it's pretty close to a balanced budget, but there's $270,000 deficit. We're asking the Board, are you comfortable with that? If you're not, let me say it really quickly. It's a little tough to make changes, and part of this is that Ron just started, literally a month ago. But we have a commitment in the upcoming year to look at places where we can cut to get it back to a balanced budget. Please.
A 0.72% variance on a $37 million budget is a balanced budget.
Yeah, really, all things considered. I have, I'm, I was doing the same math. I was like, I'm of the same opinion. It is less than 1%.
So if, if you've worked with Mr. Balderman, you'll know he's a perfectionist. And I always appreciate that about him. He pushes me, he pushes everybody already. And I've only been working with him for how long, right? We do have a plan anyways, that we thought, you know what? Anything can always be better, and we're going to always make things better. Anything can always be better, and we're going to always make things better. So we'll talk about that in a few.
My point is that I'm, that I'm comfortable with $273,000 in the hole after this year. That's not really my point. My point is this is, this is budgeting that we're talking about. I'm sure that you're going to work your tail off every day to, to get us to zero. There's no way you could predict probably within a 1% of where it's actually going to end.
Absolutely.
Right? So if you're within the margin of error, which is 1%, then it's a balanced budget. That's more my point. It's not about $273,000 negative being okay.
Sure. And to keep in mind, like, I did this, the math over and over again. A major driver as well is the insurance costs. That's been, I mean, like, last year it was, it was $3.8 million that was being expensed versus the $3.5 million being brought in when we were collecting from the individual employees. That's hard to, that's hard to keep up with.
Yeah.
And that's why...
Insurance and transportation has really...
Yes, absolutely.
...hit us hard for the last five years.
It has been. And that's where it's, I, you know, the transportation piece is a difficult piece. I have some ideas, but we'll chat about that.
And combined with CPI.
Yes.
It's just been a, a bit of a storm.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate, Carlos, what you said about like, it's not a deficit because I feel like sometimes people hold on to just like that sound, that soundbite. And yet, I think I'm kind of in the perfectionist zone. I don't, I don't like it, even though it's not that much. And I just want to, I think I mentioned this at a different meeting, I think we've been so focused on what's happening in operations and maintenance and the referendum and capital stuff like that, where I don't want to just have to, year by year, because we, we've done this and you've done excellent job of it, of looking at where we can consolidate and where we can cut. But I feel like we're always kind of clawing our way to the top, and I want it to a place where it's more sustainable and not like each year we're trying to figure it out. And so I just want to, I think as a board decide on, you know, in the, especially in the finance committee meetings, besides figuring out the facilities and finance piece, like, what are the other long-term sustainable changes that we can make so that we don't feel like we're in a position every year to navigate these changes that are happening with different funding sources and CPI and all of that? So there's like a little bit of that cushion. Does that all make sense? And then a little bit more.
The one thing that is a constant that I think the board is committed to and concerned about, to your point, Jess, is do we have that money in the, the fund balance? We have 40% or very close to that.
Yeah, it's, it's close right now.
Protect us financially. To me, at the end of the day, how much we're spending and how much revenue is coming in are budgets, and it matters. But what, to me, how much at the end of the day are we left in our fund balance?
I was actually going to ask a line to that. Can you just kind of do a very high-level explanation of how fund accounting is different than kind of our, our budgets, right? Our home budgets? Because it is inherently very different, and we've got the fund balance piece of it, you know, and can, can you just do like a very high-level kind of overview? Because I think that also ties into like, the budget can't be not exactly perfect because we're, how we have to think of it and...
Absolutely. Yeah, so for example, you know, when you, when you levy for the taxes, there are buckets. You get the 10 fund, which is education fund. It's the 20 fund, which is operation maintenance. 30 is bond and interest. We, we don't even ask people, county just puts it on them. 40 is transportation. You can't just move money from bucket to bucket to bucket. It doesn't work that way. And if you do, you might be in legal trouble. Ask Lincoln Way about that. That was a couple of years ago, though. There's, I do like doing transfers, though, when you have to bring it to the board. So for example, the district is making a really good dollar with interest rates from investments. That's one thing I've really noticed is a strength. That's something where you can take that money and put it into different buckets depending on what's needs. It'd be great to get to that point where that one bucket in particular is the 60 fund, which I really love, the Capital Projects Fund, where you can put the money into there and build that up so that we can actually hang tight and demonstrate we are saving on a rainy day, so that when we do need a big purchase or work with buildings, we have it there. And it does not count against your operating funds. So you can, you can spend as long as you have it in your, your bank. So, yeah, there are, there are nine buckets typically. The district does have some health in it. I mean, that, there's no denying that. We just want to make sure we write each bucket. So for example, the IMRF social security one. The, the district in the past spent down that particular bucket. So the corporate personal property money that was normally in the ed fund is going to be going into there to keep that bucket afloat. I can't, then, once I put it in there, I can't take that money and say, you know what? I'm going to put it back in the 10. You don't just transfer like that. So you're kind of, you're kind of put in each single spot. And that's, it's a balancing act. I think there's a lot of difficulty with other business managers that I know who've had that, especially if they've come from the private sector, because it isn't like your typical, like, savings, right? Where you can have one big savings account. Well, I don't have any of that one.
To use anywhere.
Right.
And we also only get paid like twice in, like, two big installments.
Correct.
Essentially. So we kind of, at some points in the year, it might look like we've got a boatload of money in our fund balances, but the point is that we, the goal is to, to work that down over the course of the year, so essentially.
Absolutely.
So Ron, you used that phrase, like, writing each bucket. Like, where, what do you see as the priorities for us right now? Which ones?
That's a good question. Transportation's kind of difficult, like Leah was saying, with the costs going up with that. The ed fund, the problem with the ed fund is this, it catches all sorts. Like, you could pretty much build a budget, it'd just be almost in the ed fund completely. And because, so it's not just about, always about curriculum instruction. You can do all sort of facility stuff in there at times, you can do all sorts of different work. So that's why it gets hit kind of harder than the others. I just, I think what we need to do, actually, I will have the answer to that. Can I, can I show you?
Of course.
Okay.
And we don't even need the answer today. I just, I think, I'm just curious.
I have a plan that we use, I've used in years past, and it really, it, I think it'll do wonders.
I have a quick question. So like, on this budget, the transportation ends in the negative. So what happens if you're, if the, the transportation bucket doesn't have enough money in there to cover? What do we do then?
Then you got to find, you have to move like CPPRT dollars, or you move, you have to do some transferring.
Okay.
Yeah. And you can...
There is a way to then pull and, and cover it. It's just difficult.
The, the IPAM, the Program Accounting Management, is, is so, like, for example, you can, you can transfer in on certain funds, but then you can't transfer out. It's like somebody was really bored and decided they wanted to really mess with everybody.
Yeah.
That's kind of how it is. There's not really a simple way of going about that.
But the 40% fund balance is, is like that, is in there.
Yeah.
Is in the fund, right? So we're looking at like, for transportation, bringing in $2.5 million in revenue, right? Essentially. There's more than $2.5 million in that fund right now.
That's best.
By about 40%. Or when we get all of our revenues in, because, that's, so that's why we hold that 40% fund balance, so that if you've got like, a little bit over, a little bit under, you're not in the point where you have to move stuff.
So, yeah, the 40s, the 40% is like, is your operating funds, but I will caution on that one, just because that's where each one of these funds have a fund balance. So, because, like, you could have a 40% fund balance, but it could be all in education and zero everywhere else.
Right.
That's not the case here. Just keeping that in mind.
Right.
So we're not worried about that.
Okay.
I promise you, that wouldn't be good.
Yeah. And it's a board policy, we set the amount of fund balance, and it's been 40% for...
Forever.
40 is very healthy.
Over a decade, yeah.
The state, the state recommends 25, just so you know. And then there's non-operating. So operating is the one the state really cares about. That's how they use your scores when it comes to anything regarding financials. The non-operating here, these are what they claim you can use with or without running a school, right? They're not worth operating. So you look at bond and interest, we get that down. The IMRF and social security, if it gets to a negative where it's kind of boom, or we talk about we're at that negative fund balance, then it counts against you. So that's why we wanted to make sure that that was balanced this year. Tort, which is more legal, and if you can see, is a total, that's pretty balanced. It's pretty straightforward.
Will this give us a positive rating with the state?
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, we'll still be in the threes, which is...
Is the rating dependent on audit?
I got to see, I got to look at the, I got to look at the fund balance at the board. That's what I'd have to do. So here are the recommendations that we were talking about. And there's, the very first one to me is huge. A programmatic review of the district. So in years past, at, one of my mentors, what she would do was, you look at every single program. You look at the math department, social studies, extracurriculars. You look at the business office, the whole nine yards. You take those numbers, you look at the goals of each of them, and how are they implementing and impacting kids? You find the value. Then you look at the FTE, so you put that all in there. Salaries, benefits, you list everything that goes into that program with the cost, the amount of kids that are impacted, what they do, how their scores are based on that program. You, like, for example, with athletics, we looked at in the years past, what percentage of students who were successful were in athletics when it came to certain achievement goals? You tie in everything so it makes sure it's academic. And then, once that happens, you take that data, and that's when we talk and say, if I was to give this program 10% more, what would you do to make it even better? If I were to do 10% less, how would that program be affected? And you've got to be realistic with it. So when you're cutting FTEs, you can't just say, I'm going to cut by 0.4, because we don't have 0.4 in that particular program, it'd be one person, right? So you have to be realistic as to what those particular FTEs are. It's a great exercise in terms of also showing, I believe we showed the community, this is where we're spending our money and this is why we're doing it. And it turns into, they call it educational program review. So that, to me, with all the success that this district has had, would be very beneficial to show, hey, look, this is what your dollars are doing, and this is why they're doing them. Also, I'd like to monitor, well, we'll actually closely monitor the cost of upkeep of all buildings. So when I get a text message from Joe Smith at Manning Elementary, where the pipe was rusted through, like, I mean, you could barely even get into it, it got replaced on a weekend, and then it turns out, a couple of days later, that same pipe is leaking further down, that is, that's literally a bleeding cost. And I, I'm sure you may have done this in the past, but I think there needs to be, we're going to flush it out more. Go ahead, you can laugh, that was funny. So that's one piece as well. I also want to reevaluate vendor contracts. Everything is negotiable. So I want us to keep that in mind and think about that. If the cost is too high, it doesn't mean we say yes. Cash flow, it's sort of what we've talked about with the levy, making sure that we are actually seeing where we're at, where it's going, and having that reported as often as possible. And then the working cash fund, that's something I'd like to look at. As well as alternate revenues, we can look at as well. It's just, it's about setting the district up for success. There's a lot of things that are going fantastic here. It's just a matter of, you know, the word I keep hearing is communication, 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 and proving it. It, it stinks to hear as a leader, but then you just got to do it. And I think these steps will help us at least show, and not just the community, but show the country that we're, we're the best.
Data on top of data, right? Yeah, we love data.
How are those programmatic reviews typically received? And how much time? That sounds like a lot of work. It sounds awesome, but it sounds like a lot of work.
It'll take...
Like, there could be some mixed feelings about it.
There will be. The one thing, though, that I came here to do is to make sure that we're doing stuff data-analytically and making those tough decisions with Mr. Baldorman. He's been a fantastic person already to help me with, with looking through what the, you know, what do we have? And it, it does become more of a prove it, but it's almost like a competition where people want to prove that they're doing better and better for kids. So, so I think everybody does win. It is completely data-driven. I remember the first time I did do it, when I learned it, I didn't put together a SMART goal, and I got chastised for it. Now, granted, I would have handled it the way I got in trouble for, I guess, but it really made me a better leader as well, because now I have, like we talked about in our, with our books and our reading, like, the hedgehog theory. We're focusing on maybe two, three specific goals, doing what we have to do with that, and seeing how it's correlating with student success, the money we're spending. I think it could be, it's something that districts don't typically do, but it would be worth studying, I think, if we get it done.
But it sometimes will uncover where we're spending money and not getting the value.
And that's...
And I just think that's a reality. I, I'm, again, I'm not opposed to it. I think it's, it sounds like a great exercise, but that's the reality.
It feels like a very natural follow-up to the work that we've done with data in the last two years with, with our student data.
For sure.
Which was hard and scary to take.
Performance evaluation, there was an adjustment there as well.
Yeah. And really to dig in, it feels like a very, because now I feel like, I feel like that precedent has now been kind of set with student data, and now we've got a lot of great, you know, routines around it. So now, like, let's tie it even more to a very tight budget. Let's see, make sure that all those dollars are...
The great advantage that this district has that many don't have is it is so data-driven. I can't tell you how many districts really do that. They don't. They say it, but they don't. And this is a good example of showing the great things that are happening, and you know what? This is what you're paying for. It's a great place to be, but it's about showing it.
I think it comes full circle, too, because we get hit with so many questions, and they're great questions. Like, people are holding us to task as we talk. Like, we've, we've shown what we've done with student achievement, what we can do, and we can see even greater sights. But to tie that back as we got questions of, you know, simply put, it's a little annoying because we hear it. And what, how much money do we spend per student? Like, I'm going to give you a better question to ask me. And we get, as we get that information back and we're able to deliver that, we see this and this program and how it turns out. Like, that's the goal, right?
Correct.
Is to give some data to our spending and things like that.
The data does it, and, and the thing that the state, when they do the, the funding process and the programmatic costs and how much, the one thing that I've grown to learn is that, yeah, there is a state standard, which is great, but then there is like above that. What is that? That's what Westmont should be. So if we are spending a little bit extra because of students really achieving, that's a good thing. That's a great thing. But we also have to make sure that it's being spent equitably and in the right places.
And I think also something else, too, that we said, that, you know, this is going to come up. You know, things like, the, the programs that we have brought out to fruition, and these kids are doing great, you know, what's, things that get cut, how does, how is that going to impact how our kids are learning also? Because we, there may come a time that, you know, something has to be cut or something has to be changed. What, what are we, what's the detriment? Because some people are like, oh, I had a one-room, you know, school, and I learned, and, well, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna lose this benefit and this benefit, so...
Kids are different now, right?
Yeah.
So...
But that, it ties it, it gives that, that data. So hopefully we can answer that as we get closer to making decisions, all around, I guess.
Are you going to stick up there for the next discussion item? Facilities and finance committee update?
Let's do it.
Okay. Committee meeting recap.
So the facilities and finance committee, I think we got some very valuable feedback from board and community members regarding trying to express, here are the projects that each of our buildings have, and how can we... that each of our buildings have, and how can we attack them. Um, it was extremely beneficial in terms of trying to find out, also in layman's terms, how to reach everyone, and being able to show that the data and how we get those dollar amounts can be specific for, for, for people. Like, it should be beneficial for them to be able to click on a link, be able to, be able to get to that information that we may already have, or what our vendors have, but being as transparent as possible. So we're gonna go back, we're gonna look at it, we're gonna do some revisions, and by September first, we'd like to roll out the, our information, specifically with projects in each building.
With intention of updating?
Yes.
Keeping it up to date?
Yes.
Asking folks for their, for what else do they?
Living...
How else can we do? A living document?
Yes, living document.
Let them have the, the depth of information. Let them dig as far as they want.
Yep. Give them the links.
Yeah.
Great. Cool. Okay. Uh, policy first reading? Who's got that one?
Thanks, Ron.
It's you, Kevin.
Thanks, Ron. Thank you.
That's me.
Policy. It's definitely not me.
Definitely not me.
Would've been me.
Let's see.
Rain kept me awake.
Oh, oh, we, we went over, and actually, you know, it was with Shannon, it was mostly with bookmarks, you know, footnotes in the documents. Um, you know, uh, it was reviewed by press, you know, and just mainly footnotes within the document, so. Nothing earth-shattering, nothing, yeah, nothing earth-shattering, really, so...
Yeah, there were five-year reviews of the policies, so they just updated legal references and...
Right.
So what's the process from here? This is the first
Yep.
reading. We'll have second reading and approval at the next meeting?
Yep.
Great. Okay, moving right along. Action items. Now we're at action items. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the treasurer to pay in any additional bills received in August that had been budgeted for in the current or prior fiscal year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Redonio.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of our student handbook for 2025-2026. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the CUSD 201 student handbook for the 2025-2026 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonio.
Motion passes. Approval of tentative budget. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the tentative 2025-2026 budget as presented, and that said budget will be available for public inspection in the district business office from August 13th, 2025, until board adoption on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonio.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Motion passes. And do we have to have the public hearing? When's the public hearing?
At the last September.
On the September 23rd?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the 23rd will have the public hearing when we approve it. Awesome, okay. Uh, approval of contract with Legatt Architects. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the contract with Legatt Architect as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Akiri. Oops, sorry. Ms. Redonio.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Approval of amendment, uh, to contract with Sunrise for Special Education Transportation Services. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Special Education Transportation Amendment to Contract with Sunrise to be effective July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2028, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonio.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of contract services for counseling at Westmont High School. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the contract with Kate Moon Reese, Moon Wellness LLC, Contractor of Oak and Elm Collective Therapy, and Westmont High School to provide counseling services to high school students from Westmont High School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonio.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong, this is a recurring contract?
Yes, we had this...
This is multiple years?
Yes, it's, it's, it's the same contract we had last year.
Okay, superintendent's report.
The board asked for a report from summer school, but we're still awaiting some data, even though it was a successful summer school program. But, uh, Dr. Braun will present at the next, the September board meeting about the summer school, but just because you requested that. But she's still waiting for data to come in about the success of the program, so it's preliminary to, uh, have presented it tonight. We're about to start a great school year. I'm so confident. It's gonna be amazing. Uh, the data from last year's incredible, and we will do a full report on that. One of our big focuses was on, uh, make sure that students are in attendance, and it was incredible. Uh, we had almost four hundred students who had five days or less missed, uh, which was the goal, no more than five. That's ambitious, but if students are not in school, they can't learn, and it's important that they're there every day possible. We know there are some medical exceptions from time to time, but for students to learn, they have to be present. And it's also teaching them resilience, it's teaching them commitment and dedication to their education and life skill of, uh, you know, showing up and being present to win. The chronic absenteeism rate is, for our districts, one of the best in the state as a result of the commitment of the parents and the students to be there, and some incredible work by the admin team and the whole teaching staff. So Miller had like a four-and-a-half percent chronic absenteeism rate. That's down from twenty-five percent just two years ago, which is the state average. Uh, we tracked eight counties, and the best district we could find was five to six percent. There were only a couple out of eight counties, and Miller had four-point-five percent. That's off the charts. Sam and the team, incredible. We need to replicate that this year. Everybody has to be committed to that district-wide goal. At Manning, it was about six-and-a-half percent, which once again is outstanding. At, uh, the junior high, it was four-point-six percent, which, as I say, when you look at eight counties and the best district has five percent, and these schools are getting four-and-a-half percent, it's just incredible work. The high school is in the top one percent for chronic absenteeism. Congratulations to Adam and the team, uh, at about seven-point-five percent. They, everybody's working their tails off, but it's gotta be a whole district, all hands on deck, and that will lead us to just exemplary results. Um, so...
Are we following that same kind of calendar schedule, where we had long weekends built in a couple of times?
We put that in for...
That was helpful, I thought.
Yes, it, it did. Thank you very much.
And not that it wasn't the people also being dedicated, but...
But I think that was a partnership.
Combination, it's combination.
Yeah, it's all these very, all these things coming together. So yes, we built the calendar again that gave families multiple opportunities to take long weekends as a family if that's what they wanted to do, and that's when people can go and be with their family and take vacation, and we know that's important, too. But then on the scheduled school days, we need people in there to be present so the kids can learn. Uh, we are gonna read, so we're gonna continue on that effort. We had incredible results. Uh, and we're gonna continue that. We'll monitor it, we'll celebrate it when we do the, the whole report in the fall. Uh, we are asking families to commit to twenty minutes of reading a day at minimal, uh, at home, to have students reading, reading to your kids. It's so powerful and important for their literacy skills. And we saw subsequently significant increases in our literacy performance this year at every single grade level. So we want to keep on working on that. So we are excited and ready for this upcoming school year. I think, I know our admin team is fired up. We can't wait. We have a new teacher orientation again tomorrow, and we're excited to welcome those team members to the team. We have the, uh, all staff is back next Monday, and we're gonna get revved up for student attendance on Wednesday. So we can't wait to see the students we love and give them the best service possible, and I'm confident we're gonna have a great year.
Awesome.
Great.
Board reports.
Um, I just want to give a shout-out, uh, Westmont Band Camp. Happened, uh, Ms. Beeterman, um, students had a good time, you know, nice pictures, nice video. You know, my student had fun there, so thank you.
Okay, future meetings and events. First day of school for students, August 20th. Preschool screening, uh, schedule it with South School if you are in need, August 22nd. First day of preschool, August 27th. Miller's Curriculum Night is August 28th from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. Manning's Curriculum Night is also August 28th from 6:15 to 7:15 p.m. Uh, there is no school on Labor Day, which is September 1st. The Westmont High School Open House is on September 3rd at 6:30 p.m. Westmont Junior High School's Curriculum Night is September 4th at 6:00 p.m., and our very next meeting of the regular board meeting of the CUSD Board of Education is September 10th at 6:30 p.m. Is that right?
No, the ninth.
September 9th at 6:30 p.m. Be here or be square. Uh, any communications? I don't think so. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the August 12th, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We paid it, eight, it was 4:30.